The work session will now come to order. Denise, please call roll.
Deborah Neary?
Here.
Patsy Kojones?
Here.
Lisa Fricki?
Here.
Maureen Nichols?
Here.
Rachel Wise?
Here.
Robin Stevens?
Here.
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
John Whittle?
Here.
Commissioner Blinstead?
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you very much. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you are done speaking. And please, turn off your cell phones at this time. Commissioner's report. Commissioner?
Yeah, first, like normal, the consent agenda process, if I lose track, I guess it's purple, or lavender, or lilac, or whatever color that is. If you have any questions about consent agenda items, please fill that out and put it in front of the basket over there in front of Scott's seat, since Scott's not there. Report on rules, and actually, you can open up that particular document. I got a couple, or there are a couple rules that we had approved for repeal, and those were approved by the Governor, Rule 46 and Rule 53. We're awaiting feedback for, or response from the Governor on Rule 11 that we must have done in our September, August or September meeting. So we're waiting on that for early childhood. And then another one that I wanted to mention to you, Rule 91. Rule 91, we just recently enacted, and was just recently signed by the Governor, and then we found essentially an unintended error. It ended up containing language that would have required all drivers of vehicles that would have had a kind of a big impact on our school districts that maybe would have occasional drivers for activities and other things have to go through the same training as the normal round bus driver. So, so we are working to get that adjusted and changed, and we're trying to fast-track that. We've let the Attorney General know and the Governor know. We have the hearing scheduled for December 18th, so it'll probably be actually one of those rare January action items, we hope, anyway, to put back in front of you then. So, Rachel, yeah?
Just real quick, Commissioner, timeline then, if it gets back in front of us, January and then on through the process?
We hope to kind of-
What would you project is, because that has come up a little bit-
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping, because we've kind of done the outreach, and I'm hoping that they'll fast-track it. I know we've had a couple conversations that it'll get reviewed quickly. It's a pretty minor change as far as the, and it wasn't intended in the first place, so I, we've already communicated that, so it's a matter of hopefully that the AG and the Governor can review that quickly, so.
Like, maybe it's there by March?
That's, I might hope, I, I'm hoping maybe we can walk it over it right after we approve it in January, if that timeline works out, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I might just point out while I'm thinking of it here that obviously we have Andrea being cross-trained into this role, so welcome Andrea, and thanks, thanks for being willing to do this.
He thinks he chose to fell there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Board priorities, policy research. Dr. For?
I have nothing.
Have nothing. Standing committee reports. Patricia Tim, please report on the Policy Committee meeting.
We did not have a Policy Committee meeting this month.
Microphone.
I'm sorry.
See, we didn't have a meeting. We didn't have a policy meeting this month.
Very good, very good. Vice President Nichols, please report on the Legislative Committee meeting.
I have nothing to report today, but our committee is meeting tomorrow after our business meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Patricia Tim, please report on the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee.
We're meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock.
Very good, thank you. Lisa Fricki, please report on the AQuest Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting.
We had a review of assessments with Jeremy Henninger, and we will bring that before you tomorrow for approval. And then we had various discussions on other issues related to teacher prep.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Patsy Kojones, please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting.
We did not have an action item today, but I do have two things to talk about. First of all, the equity lens is up in front of you, and so I want to thank Ryan For and whoever else, so applause to him.
Katie Weaver.
And who?
Katie Weaver.
And Katie, okay, for making that possible. It's very nice to see that completed and up in front of us. And then we had quite a good discussion about Nebraska being appointed to one of five schools to continue the work on equity for the next year concerning policy and sustainability of what we've already done. And so, we've been working to get a committee together and to get the plan and timeline ready to go. It's got to be in tomorrow, so we will continue to be working on equity. You'll hear me speak about it again, I know you're excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. I will report on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. We have one action item, and that is to grant the Commissioner authority to approve the 2019 to 20 trust fund budget for the Nebraska Center for Education of Children who are blind or visually impaired. All four board members recommended approval of this action item. There's no questions? Didn't y'all have any questions, concerns? If we could, could I have you two ladies come up and join us and give us just a brief explanation of anything that has changed in this year?
Was this mic on?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm going to turn this over to Sally. We collaborate very, very much on this trust fund, and she can give you the details of everything, but it's exciting to work on and see all the great outcomes for children who are blind, visually impaired in the state.
Okay. Seems like I was just here. The year goes by fast. We do this each December with the trust funds, which is funding that has been given in, for purposes for the School for the Blind and the students we work with. So each year, we do an expenditure report and give an update, but also prepare the budget for the next year. We serve about 800 kids across the state of Nebraska in a lot of different ways, so we're in touch with them and their families statewide, as well as all the teachers of the visually impaired in the state. So lots of programs and services, and we always welcome anyone to come on down and take a look. We're located in Nebraska City. Any specific questions on the budgets, or?
Thank you. Thank you, Teresa.
All right.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wow. Wow, this is a lot more fun than we are.
Dr. For, could you introduce our special guest to us, sir?
Is all right?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm gonna actually have David Jespersen come up to do the introduction, I guess, so.
Hello. David Jespersen, Public Administration Officer at NDE. Today, we had a wonderful tour of four different high schools that all are working right now. These students all want to be future educators, and they all currently attend classes at SEC in that program to work out. So, they came up here to learn all about NDE. I think we gave them about 10% of what NDE does, and it, and it filled much of their day, so if you guys, please welcome our future educators.
Go ahead, ma'am.
What school districts are represented?
Which ones are? UTAN, Raven Central, Ashland Greenwood, and Wahoo.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. And again, from the State Board of Education, all of us on the State Board welcome you and have great expectations for your future as great teachers in Nebraska. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Rachel Wise, please report on the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee meeting, please, ma'am.
Yes, the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee has one discussion item today and one action item. We also spent a little bit of time discussing our end-of-the-year scope of work and some of the things that we need to put together for next year, and we will present in January kind of a summary of the scope of work from this year. I'm going to start out, Katie's already here, introducing Katie Graham for our discussion item, which is to review a draft of the Perkins Five State Plan. And that has been a plan that she's been working diligently on with her team, and it includes an opportunity for us to start to think about having input at a committee level. We've had some preliminary discussion and some recommendations throughout the process, and this is our chance to really take a look at the draft and where we're at. So with it, I'll turn it over to you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Excited to finally be here. We've been talking about it for so long. They were not a plant, but perfect, can you guys hold up your folders? I love seeing this.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, CTE is in the room today, and you guys take classes at SEC through the Career Academy and their education and training pathway, which is certainly one of our career clusters. So, very timely, love that they're here to hear all of this. Okay, so yes, thanks, Rachel, for that introduction. We've been working for over a year now since the law was passed in the summer of 2018, trying to gear up for how we're going to implement the new Perkins Plan. So today, the goal really is to, as you all have, I think, in front of you, give you a copy of the full draft of state plan for Perkins and how NDE hopes to implement all of the provisions within. But specifically, I had some recommendations from the committee to highlight a couple key points within the plan. So, starting off by just reviewing the purpose of Perkins, the funding structure, and some key definitions that are critical to understanding a lot of our implementation processes. Some of the key decision points and recommendations that we've been working closely with the SPPI committee on. Really briefly, just showing you a high level of the required elements of the plan. As you review, you'll see that's how the plan is organized. And then an updated timeline of the different steps that not only the Board will be taking or hope to take between now and April 15th, when the plan is due, but also some of the simultaneous planning activities that will be happening at the exact same time. Happy to take questions throughout, if that's okay, or, or at the end, whichever's easiest for you all. And I'm going to try to talk slow, since I get that comment every time I'm at the Board. So if I go too slow, let me know, and I'll wrap it up.
I don't believe it, is what I'm gonna say. I won't believe it.
I'll try, really hard. Okay, so just as a reminder, Perkins, Career and Technical Education, the purpose of this new act, which is the fifth in its series, has been going on for over 100 years, started as vocational education, has been completely transformed. This current act really focuses on increasing learner access to high-quality CTE programs of study, with a focus on systems alignment, and that's systems within NDE and systems as a state, so other workforce development efforts, as well as other educational efforts. Focus on program improvement, not just maintaining what we have, but really making sure we're continuously improving, and make sure that all students, all learners are prepared to meet to the ever-changing priorities and landscape and needs of learners and employers for today and tomorrow. So with Perkins, annually, we receive a little bit over $7 million, and this is a formula based on our population. And it's not an entitlement program at the state or federal level, so we, as NDE, as well as our locals, have to do things to get those funds. Specifically, we have to submit this four-year state plan, identifying how we're going to implement all of the provisions within the law. And one of the key pieces of that are the statewide performance indicator targets that we will be federally held accountable for meeting, to make sure we're still eligible for these funds, and that our programs are of high quality and we're meeting these indicators. One example of the indicators which align a lot with SAV is graduation rate. So are these students, you know, meeting a, you know, high rigorous threshold for graduation rates? I know we've talked about before, it's consistently about eight to 10 percentage points higher than the general education student. So we're right now in the transition plan, or we develop it. If you look at that timeline on the bottom, the four-year state plan begins July 1, beginning of the fiscal year, will run through 2024, and then we will have to update our state plan and submit another four-year plan. This is unlike Perkins Four, where we just had one state plan until we got a new law, and that lasted for 12 years. So I'm excited to see a very intentional revisit of this plan in four years. So just to refresh, two definitions or activities I want to make sure we're all on the same page with. The first one is program of study. This is how we deliver CTE in Nebraska, and it's part of the law, and we take a very bold and proactive approach by developing and having approved by you all state model programs of study and standards. And I think this Board has seen at least one set of those standards come to you all. Programs of study are made up of very intentionally sequenced courses that grow in rigor and depth, and ultimately culminate into either a workplace experience, a credential, something that helps with that seamless transition to the next step, be it post-secondary education at the two- or four-year credential level, or, or straight into the workforce. So here's just an example. Programs of study typically have an introductory course, an intermediate course, and a capstone course. Some programs of study have four courses, they might have two intermediate courses, they might have three intermediate courses, but generally, it's these three courses at these three different levels. And this is going to be really important, because one of the key policy decisions that we've been working on with the Board is the definition of a type of CTE participant, and that's called a concentrator. It's a student who really concentrates in a very narrow, specific area versus dabbling and taking an intro course here or an intro course there. So we, as a state, had to put some parameters for that accountability purpose of what a concentrator would be. So these sequence of courses and programs of study are going to be really important as we get to that a little bit later in the presentation. Any questions so far? You'll see like a paragraph definition in the plan of what a program of study is, I keep it high level. The other real big piece of our plan really focuses on our revision program, and probably everybody's heard of the revision program, but I wanted to take a minute so everybody sees all the different components, because again, this is going to be critical to one of our new, real big implementation provisions. So revision has been around since, I believe, 2012, and it's grown over time, and it provides an opportunity for any school district to take part in this year-long process, led and facilitated by our staff in the department, to help them do a deep dive into their current CTE system, identify areas for improvement, specifically focusing on that alignment to local and regional labor market demands, and then develop a four-year action plan, three-to-five-year action plan, where they identify the high priority steps that they need to take to move their whole system forward. So this process has been going on, we've had over half of the school districts in the state go through this process with great success. We've seen incredible outcomes, we've seen, you know, bonds passed and other funding streams come in to, well, it's got to bluff, build an entire school around a Career Academy model, I mean, we, and everything in between, from adding a program to changing an entire district. So revision has been really, really successful. Specifically, the main outcomes have been that alignment piece, making sure local districts' career programs align with workforce needs and economic development priorities. I believe that was one of the main reasons it was created. It's, a teacher retires, oftentimes, we just hire another one just like them, without that pause to make sure the programs that are being offered are the ones that align with either economic or workforce demands, as well as student interest, among other things. Revision also helps schools update current career programs and programs of study to make sure they're meeting post-secondary entrance requirements as those change as well. Generally strengthen career readiness resources. This is where we see that systemic career development programming throughout a school system, not just in high school, but starting as early as late elementary school, or early elementary school, through middle school, and onto high school. And engage local industry and business representatives in CTE programming. One of the probably most impactful parts of this whole process, so this is the year-long process. We have a first meeting facilitated by our staff and a lot of school representatives, and then there's a community engagement meeting, where community members are intentionally invited, brought together, including business and industry, and the whole role of the school participants is to sit and listen, and just make sure that we're hearing all sides. Then we come back together for that third meeting and take everything we've heard from a data perspective, and try to come up with a plan for action moving forward. I bring all of this up because there is a new provision in the law, it's probably the biggest change to Perkins that we've seen since its inception. That might be an overstatement, but I think so. And every local recipient is now required to complete something called a comprehensive local needs assessment. And as we were looking at all the different components of the needs assessment, and trying to see what the, the real outcome intention was, it was revision. And since revision already had such great brand awareness, I mean, from the Governors talking about revision, to schools are reaching out daily about revision, and we have a process that works, I think it's been refined over a lot of years, our staff has taken our original revision process and expanded it, changed it a bunch, because now everybody's required to do it, to meet the needs of that comprehensive local needs assessment requirement. So we're even calling the needs assessment revision, and trying to work on language right now to make sure the field understands that it, it is a different process now. Revision, as it had been, has evolved. And with it comes a lot of new opportunities, and we're excited to see as that rolls out this week, you know, how that's implemented locally. But the, the great thing about it is, per the law, the use of Perkins funds is now restricted to meeting the outcomes identified through this process. So we know locals are going to be using funds, will only be permitted to use funds based on a process that was filled with a lot of input and data and stakeholder engagement.
Katie, a quick question for you, in regards to supporting or paying for revision, does 10% come out of the Perkins funds to pay for it?
That's a really good question. So the 10%, I'm assuming you're referring to our reserve funds that we used to have-
Yeah, versus the flow-through, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's right. So a couple changes. We are now able to reserve up to 15%, and we do anticipate those funds to continue supporting this process. So right now, as we implement, and we're kind of in between two processes, we have, thanks guys, have fun. We are offering some of those funds immediately to help schools who might not have ever been involved in this, or don't have the capacity right now to do it. We're offering, we're calling like mini-grant opportunities, whether it be to pay for time outside of contract time or a sub, so a teacher can participate in this process. That's to get them through now, but we do fully intend to kind of have that action grant program like we do now, to fund some innovative activities and ideas and initiatives that could be then scaled and replicated across the state.
Thank you.
Absolutely, that is the plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think I have one more bullet here. Yes. So revision, this needs assessment process really will be used in Nebraska, our hope for local CTE implementation. It'll guide the local application and subsequent funding decisions, and this would be the same for any type of participant. As you can see there, we have standalone districts who receive enough funds to control all of their programming alone. We have consortia, which are districts who, per the law, don't meet that minimum threshold of funds to make sure programs are of sufficient size, scope, and quality, as well as all six community colleges are also Perkins recipients. So everybody now has the opportunity to take that real deep dive into their programs and create a plan for addressing especially any disparities in access to the programs or performance. Those are huge, huge points. As you'll see when you read the plan, there's six different elements that make up the revision, the updated revision process, so we think it'll, it'll be a good start. Something we'll continue to refine. Okay. Oops, that was, so key decision points. So, as Rachel mentioned, we've been working with the committee for a while now, really discussing all of the different factors that we had to consider, the different decisions we had to make, and the feedback we received to make sure we made a really informed decision, and just wanted to go through some of those, probably most pressing ones, given the recommendations from the committee. The recommendations that we had taken from the committee months ago, we vetted, for lack of a better word, with the field to make sure this was in line with what we're hearing with stakeholder input, and I'll tell you, everything has been right on course. A lot of information went into making a lot of these decisions. So one of the first ones is when Perkins funds are able to be used for CTE programming. In the previous law, it stipulated that they could only support program, CTE programs from seventh grade through community colleges. In the new law, it allows states to move that back to fifth grade. As we've been working really hard on career development activities, the Board recommended that we do make that permissible, that if a district wanted to expand their career development programming into late elementary school, that we would make that permissible. Another key decision point, as John mentioned, 85% of the funds that NDE receives flows straight through to our recipients, and that's at both the secondary and post-secondary levels. Under Perkins Four, that split of funds, how much of the 85% went to secondary and how much went to post-secondary, was 55% secondary, 45% post-secondary. And that split came from changes from Perkins Three to Perkins Four. So after a lot of review of the new requirements of the law, looking at numbers in terms of how many participants are at the secondary level, which is over 100,000 annually, and how many participants are at the post-secondary level, which is about, I want to say it's around 32, 34,000 annually, so a lot more participating in secondary. The implementation of this new revision process, available funding sources, how, you know, different people are able to raise funds, and then if we're allowing now programming going down to the fifth grade, we're assuming there will probably be even more secondary recipients. The recommendation was to revert back to what we've had historically, but also looking at the numbers, what we feel is necessary for programming, and that split be now going back to 60% secondary, 40% post-secondary. Any questions? Guys are too easy. All right. The other one, which we kind of already covered, was utilizing an updated revision process to satisfy the new comprehensive local needs assessment requirement. Another new one, I mentioned earlier, we have all of those different accountability indicators that we will be held to from the federal government. One of them was a choice, we got to pick. Perkins is one of the most flexible federal laws that I've seen, and this is kind of representative of that. We had to create or select from three indicators related to program quality. So what is a state where we're going to hold our local districts to, related to program quality, and there were three options. One of them was the percentage of CTE concentrators, which we'll talk about that definition, I think it's the next bullet. How many CTE concentrators participated and earned CTE dual credit while in high school, which is certainly in line with a lot of what we do. How, the percentage of CTE concentrators who earned a post-secondary credential while in high school, so that could be anything from a recognized certificate to a degree, if they had received an associate's degree while in high school. And then the third one was the percentage of CTE concentrators who participated in a work-based learning experience. After a lot of nationwide and statewide consultation from pretty much anyone who would be a part of this decision, from post-secondary, business and industry, certainly our locals at the secondary level, through all avenues, participation in work-based learning emerged as the priority to help move our systems forward. That's not to say the other two won't be considered, they're a core part of our programming in CTE, but work-based learning is what, with the committee, has been recommended and supported by all stakeholder feedback as our program quality indicator.
Would you explain for the public, the option that smaller schools could have of using something that they've already created for the students, like the stores and things like that?
Yeah. Great point. I appreciate you bringing that up. So inherent to holding folks accountable for participation in work-based learning, we have to define what work-based learning is. There's, you know, learning about work, like a job shadow, or maybe some sort of field trip, and then there's learning at work, you know, really learning through application and, and learning about the worlds of work in the worlds of work, connecting with business leaders, you know, and educators. We felt, we talked, had a great conversation about really feeling the need to make sure, however we define it, it's flexible, and that it's responsive to the needs of some of our very small or very rural districts, and some of our very isolated rural districts, where there might not be as many opportunities. So as we refine the state policy and implementation, making sure that something like a school-based enterprise, where there's some sort of business within the school, we've seen this as coffee shops, we've seen it in our skilled and technical sciences as, you know, woodworking or machining, there's so many different options, making sure that those programs would be recognized as a work-based learning experience, and that all the quality criteria and training necessary and business connections would be embedded as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We're also looking into simulated workplace experiences. There's a couple states that have explored that in detail. I don't know if we know enough just yet, but making sure we're flexible and responsive, especially as we just start to launch this.
I am so new, and I know enough to be dangerous, so I apologize for my question, but, so during this process, I know you talked at the local level, how you include the local business or other entities, but at the statewide level, are you working with the chamber and future employers, and, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Do you mind just explaining a little bit about that?
You bet. I think this is, this is the hardest part of implementing this. There's a lot of pockets of real- There's a lot of pockets of real excellence. We see this a lot in Omaha. There's Intern Omaha, and there's some real big programs, and businesses are hungry for this. They want to be a part of it because they want an end to preparing their future workforce and know that if they can start engaging with these students, they might be potential employees. So we have, I actually have a meeting on Thursday with Avenue Scholars, who's doing a ton in Omaha. We've been working with the state chamber and the Omaha Chamber. Dream It, Do It has been a really big partner in a lot of this work. We don't have a statewide work-based learning system. Some states do. I'm hoping through this and the partnerships, it might not be ours, it's going to be the state, so we just want to be a part of it and make sure it's aligned to curricula and these programs of study. But we won't be able to do this ourselves. Even thinking about tracking the experiences, we don't have a system yet set up. We do it by course codes right now, but that's missing some of the key parts, like what was the quality of the experience, or how did that relate to the student's, you know, program of study? Those are goals. And I think having this identified as the quality indicator will just push that forward because now we're going to have to define it and make sure it's really addressed at a statewide level and not at each individual local level. Yeah. Great question. Any other questions? Okay. So we get to it, the concentrator definition. I've been teasing it, you know, for 10 minutes now. So in Perkins, under Perkins IV, we kind of looked at two different levels of participation when it came to CTE. One was a participant, and that would be any student in any given year who took at least one course in CTE. Important, we're still tracking that, that's great. But a lot of our indicator, actually all of our indicators now, are only focused on those students who really concentrate in a narrow area. The new law did provide a definition for a concentrator, which included that student taking at least two courses in a single program or program of study. Under Perkins IV, Nebraska has always held that a concentrator is a student who took three courses in a program or program of study, because we felt that that would really signal a difference between somebody dabbling and somebody really concentrating. With the new definition, it's funny, my, this is my first go-around with federal legislation, it does say at least two, but we've been also given guidance that they mean two, not three. They mean, they mean two, even though they put at least two. So one of the ways we thought we could mitigate this, because we do feel important that we're able to distinguish between those who dabble and those who really concentrate, going back to the definition of a program of study, we're only going to count, or it's proposed that we count that intermediate and capstone-level course as those two courses for a concentrator. So the introductory course wouldn't be counted for a concentrator, but after a student completes an intermediate or a capstone, then they would get that signal as a concentrator. So for our state interpretation of that definition, that's how we would operationally define it. Any questions?
And that fits within the guidelines of the federal?
And it's within the guidelines. It's still two courses, we just get to specify at which level. I think this will be really helpful when we talk about our outcomes, to actually say, what's the value add of these programs, or, you know, this will help us really make that distinction. Because honestly, if we did two courses in any two, we would probably have like a 90% concentrator rate, which really wouldn't tell us a ton, because on average, students graduate Nebraska high schools having earned five and a half CTE credits. So most students would be considered concentrators, and I'm not sure that's reflective of what we're trying to show here. It doesn't mean anything necessarily to the student. They don't know they're a concentrator. There's nothing good, bad, or otherwise that we have in place right now to signal a concentrator. So it's really more of an accountability data point and how we're going to put parameters around those. Excuse me.
Could you give me an example of what class a concentrator might take so that I can have something?
You bet. I'm going to go back to, and we've got a great website, which I'd be happy to share, which has all of our programs of study broken out by introductory, intermediate, or capstone level course. There we go. So this is a sample program of study in software development. I saw Jackie here. Jackie's our Communication Information Systems Career Field Specialist. So she'll probably know a lot more, but I can pretty much tell that that introductory course, when it says principles, that's going to be rather basic in terms of computer science. Probably not basic, because it's still probably a lot. But in this program, that's the most introductory course. Then it moves in rigor, and there's an expectation then for cybersecurity and software development that they do have that principal foundational knowledge of this area. So the intermediate and capstone would be after a student takes that introductory course, realizes this is what they're really interested in, I want to learn more, and then they keep taking those courses.
Thank you.
So are these consistent across the whole state, or these can be modified district by district?
Really great question. One of the ways Nebraska has really led in this space is by developing state model programs of study, and that's what you all see. And we, we do that to make sure and to take some of the burden on making sure they are appropriately sequenced, business and industry is involved, they're the first step of this program of study development process, making sure that our programs are responsive to their needs. Post-secondary's a lot of times involved, all the time involved in these decisions. There are options, and you'll, as you read in the plan, every secondary district is required to offer at least one state model program. But if there is a need, I just got off the phone with Omaha Burke this afternoon, who has an aviation program. That's not a statewide need, but it certainly is a need in their area. So we do have a mechanism to approve locally developed programs of study, and they have to demonstrate how they're appropriately sequenced, business and industry was involved, labor market alignment, post-secondary involvement. So we've got, I think, 67, 65, 67 state model programs of study across all 16 career clusters. And then we also have a handful of locally developed programs that folks have applied for, we've reviewed, and then we continue to support.
I'm going to really show what I don't know. So who can teach these specialized career classes?
So these, just like any other course, there's clearing endorsements for the appropriate teacher certification. So our teacher prep institutions across the state have programs in all of these areas. So what would be the endorsement for the computer science or?
It'd be the information technology supplemental endorsement or a math endorsement.
So information technology supplemental endorsement or a math endorsement. So at the time these courses, is that right? Is that what you said, math? So at the time these courses and then programs of study are developed, credentialing and proper endorsements are considered. So when we launch it, everyone is able to see, you know, what sort of endorsement requirements is necessary.
Do you want to mention permit also?
Yes.
Because that fits into this?
That's perfect.
Example in some of these areas.
You bet. Career ed, like many other areas, oftentimes faces challenges finding appropriately qualified, highly credentialed folks to teach these courses. So a number of years ago, before my time, again, in an area of leadership, there was an alternative certification for career education, and it's called the Career Education Teaching Permit. And that allows folks from a couple of different ways, but most often, industry professionals with demonstrated work experience, I think it's five years, in that very specific area, along with a human relations training and a couple of other requirements, are able to fill an unmet need in a local district. So the local district applies on behalf of that person, saying, we've tried to find someone properly endorsed to teach in this area. We haven't. This person's an industry expert with all of this knowledge, here's documentation of their work history, and that goes through our teacher cert process. So they're able to be certified and properly endorsed to teach these courses.
And even with that flexibility, are we still finding shortages to teach these?
There are some areas. So specifically in skilled and technical sciences, that always shows up on the list. I think in the plan, there's a specific section on educator recruitment and retention, I think would, would speak a lot to, to your questions. But often, three to four areas on the list that NDE puts out about those shortage areas are career and technical education areas. They sure are. I also think we're trying to focus on recruiting a diverse teacher pipeline along, along with, you know, the, the board's vision and direction, too. So we've got work to do there, for sure. Yeah. Okay. Now let me get back to where we were.
Performance targets?
Yes. It's just going really slow. So for performance targets, you'll see within the plan and also separate from the plan, all of our measurement definitions for the different secondary and post-secondary performance targets that will be held accountable for. We had to not only, just like the concentrator definition, operationally define what we mean by graduation rate. So is that the four-year graduation rate, seven-year, you know, how do we align with other metrics? We just aligned with our SO1s. As well as proposed targets for the next four years. So in Perkins IV, we negotiated every year what we were going to try to hit. Now, we've spelled out, we worked really closely with the data team, and they use a lot of very sophisticated statistical projection modeling things, where they were able to figure out, okay, here's our baseline, how we've been performing, here's what would be reasonable and bold, you know, charting out for the next four years. So you'll see those as well. Those are now available online, and by law have to be up for 60 days to accept public comment. So we're hopeful a lot of folks, especially locals, take a deep look at what those are. And the whole state plan, which we'll talk about later as well, by law has to be up for 30 days. We're going to let it be up for 60, 62, 62 days, just given the time of the year and holidays, and wanting to make sure we afford everyone the opportunity to provide really meaningful feedback on the plan as well as the performance targets. And finally, the last, I think, key policy decision was related to a statewide consortia allocation. So under Perkins IV, there was a statewide Perkins consortia created called Partnerships for Innovation. And through our state plan, we required a specific allocation be made from our locals using Perkins Funds directly to the statewide consortia. It's been going for 12 or so years. The law has changed and needs have changed, and we, we can go into a lot of conversation. But the, the recommendation from the board was not to mandate this allocation, but rather make it allowable and permissive, but let the locals really decide, you know, how they want to utilize their funds, especially given the new revision process and the fact that their funds have to be used to address the outcomes of that process. This would provide a little bit more local flexibility, because the current, I think, allocation is at 8%. So every year, locals were required to allocate 8% directly to Partnerships for Innovation, and the recommendation was to not make that a required contribution in the Perkins Five Plan. Any questions? Okay, the rest is going to be really easy. That's most of the talking. So in our guidelines for the submission of the state plans, there were four main parts, and you'll see this as you read through, especially if you look at the table of contents. The first part really talked about how we developed the plan and what consultation we had to make sure all voices were represented as we developed it. The, the biggest part would be the second section, which is program administration and implementation. So how are we going to implement CTE in the state and all of the different considerations that go along with that? The third section relates to fiscal responsibility. So this is where the split of funds, how we're going to approve programs and ensure local eligibility. And then finally, the last section relates to those performance targets I just mentioned. So just briefly, I wanted to share with you a little bit of information. I think we have taken, I think we've spent most of our energy in the development of this plan consulting with stakeholders. We saw a cue from, you know, your strategic vision and direction and ESSA, and know that we want to make sure we have as many voices represented as possible. So we had a number of different structured and unstructured opportunities for input, and you'll see those detailed in the plan. There was a required list of stakeholders that had to be consulted or engaged, and we have beyond hit all of the requirements. And as we're speaking with you today, the plan is now technically public. So this begins our public comment period, which we see as a catalyst for additional feedback on the whole plan. So that'll be for the next two months. Taken together, all of the different structured and unstructured opportunities, both inside of the agency as well as outside, informed the development of our four-year plan, which included a set of strategic priorities, and then all of the different implementation components throughout.
Katie, I'm sorry, Katie.
Yeah?
Katie, I got to ask this question in regards to the, the groups that make up revision. After reading Perkins Five, it seems like the same group we have for revision are the required stakeholders.
That's right.
Is that a fact?
That is a fact. And one of the ways we have tried to help with that, because that's a huge burden, and I think it's one of the things we've been struggling with most, is how do we have, help our locals implement something that is a lot of work, when they're already doing a lot of work and we don't have a ton of resources to help them do this? We don't have a big enough staff to go out and help every single, every district and every community college go through this process. So one of the ways we have tried to address just that is we split the new revision process into two parts. One is a very local part, where every district answers questions specifically related to their local issues and engage stakeholders that they probably have easier access to. And then a regional component, where we're using the economic development regions of the state, and that's where our staff go and facilitate. We also have staff that are making sure all of the required stakeholders are either at that regional meeting, or the locals have been able to identify them. We're going to handle all logistics, all coordination, and the synthesis of taking all the different local assessments, kind of aggregating them for a regional meeting, and then taking that and having some sort of outcome document where all the priorities or all of the activities are then prioritized for the region.
But does that fill the square, if you will, the requirement by Perkins Five?
It would fulfill the requirement.
All right. Thank you.
You bet. Happy to, I think, we're going to talk in the timeline. Next month, I'll be able to provide you a copy of that full process, along with a copy of the new local application, which are both required for the plan. I think that would help you see kind of?
Thank you.
Where, yeah. Great question. It's been a hard one to figure out.
And just one other thing to interject at this point, too, might be good for everyone to know that next month, Katie will be available to do some one-on-ones with you. So as you take this with you, as she finishes and you start to think about it, she'll schedule an opportunity before board meetings and some things for you to have really one-on-one with Katie and/or her team to talk about some of the questions you may have also.
On that same topic, like, is it possible, like, you could give me a list of the people in my districts that are working on this with you?
Everyone. Every district is required.
Okay. So is there a specific liaison then from each? Okay. And that, I'd just like to know?
Sure.
Who from my district, so I can just, if I want to get some feedback from them, too, if that's agreeable.
One of the structures we put in place, we're calling them the convener. So each region will have a convener from either our staff or someone we're contracting with to help do that coordination, so that might be a really good connection, too. Yeah, you bet.
And Katie, I hate to go on, but one quick question. You haven't had a schedule for revision? So in other words, if a board member sees that a school district is beginning the revision process, we could possibly sit in on it?
Absolutely. And I think you all attending that regional meeting would be really beneficial, because you kind of hit all of, you might now be in several economic development regions, because that doesn't necessarily align with state board regions, ESU regions, or community college regions. But I think that would be great. So yes, we're launching it this week. So, meaning then, schools have the flexibility to do their local part when, when they need, but that regional meeting, we're coordinating. So I absolutely can make sure you guys have those dates. So also, just wanted to point out, we took a really synergistic approach to this development as well, and we reviewed in detail existing policy and existing recommendations that we received to develop the plan. We wanted to make sure this plan wasn't by itself, but either addressed, spoke to, aligned with, or supported other plans and priorities within education and, again, within the state's workforce development system. So specifically, you'll notice a lot of familiar language in the plan related to your strategic vision and direction. I started to pull out, you know, the exact goals that aligned, and it was pretty much all of them. So I, I hope you see that in, I think, to call attention to how CTE and our team is going to help meet the goals of the boards and the agency's strategic vision and direction. We also aligned with as much as possible ESSA and the Workforce Innovation Opportunities Act, which is also going through revision right now. The Department of Labor primarily oversees that. Also working very closely with special education and IDEA and the Higher Education Act, as that's up for reauthorization right now. All of that impacts career and technical education. We wanted to make sure that was reflected in our plan, so it's all kind of one big cohesive system. Also, yes?
I just caught teacher prep programs, so can you slow down on that?
Yes.
How, how is that going to work? How is this going to work with teacher prep?
The Perkins Five Plan, you mean?
Or whatever you said about teacher prep, it just like moved the plan idea together?
Just now? I'm trying to remember what I said.
You said Higher Ed Act.
Higher Ed Act, yes. Thank you. Yes.
Sorry.
No, that's important. So always thinking when, with career and technical education, that is that seamless path to post-secondary education. We're doing a really intentional job of staying on top of HEA reauthorization to know how that may or may not impact Perkins. We see at the federal level, they're starting to align the laws. I think I might have done that presentation here when ESA was passed and then Workforce Innovation Opportunities was reauthorized and then Perkins, so everything aligned. And I think we'll see that with the Higher Education Act as well. Teacher prep definitely has a part in this. There's a whole section in there about it. Yeah, absolutely. We also have collaborated with our partners across the agency vocational rehabilitation, specifically special education, specifically Lane and Shirley, specifically, just to make sure everything really is in alignment. Also sent the draft plan to all office administrators and other related staff this morning to make sure they were able to see that alignment and let us know if there's any areas that we could strengthen or even just aligning verbiage, you know, making sure that we're all speaking the same language. The other really exciting thing, aside from expanded stakeholder engagement, which is fun, is Advanced CTE, which is our national nonprofit organization. It's actually the 100th year of their existence next year. They received a lot of grant funding after Perkins was passed and part of those funds is being used to provide states an expert review of their plans before they're due. So we've started that process. We have four different reviewers that are experts in CTE from around the country taking a look at our plan. We had one round of feedback already come and we've been using that as well to update and refine the plan. So in general, they were very excited about it. They loved our plan. All right, the next section, which is probably the medias one, is all about program administration implementation. And here, you'll see our vision for education workforce development, how we plan to implement CTE programs, a really lengthy section about meeting the needs of special populations, which was a huge focus of Perkins Five, and also accountability and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable to meeting specific goals and seeing specific results. So just a preview, this is our updated vision for Nebraska career and technical education, which we're pretty proud of. And I'll just read it. Nebraska career and technical education will deliver coordinated or relevant learning opportunities that engage each student in high-quality rigorous education. These opportunities will be enhanced by partnerships with business and industry, workforce and economic development leaders, allowing learners to turn their passion, talents, and strengths into successful careers and fulfilling lives. We also, along with our whole framework, which is mission, vision, we have these guiding principles. And I think this is one of the areas I'm most excited about and we've talked with the staff a bit, too. When we think about all the work we do, having something to ground it and make sure we're always considering these four areas. Is the work we're doing equitable? Is it relevant? Is it innovative and is it coordinated? And in the state plan, you will see an expansion of what does that mean? But then having this as kind of our North Star, making sure when we're thinking about the work we do, that it's encompassing all four of these attributes. And then finally, through stakeholder engagement, the requirements of the law, all kinds of fun things, we were able to develop, at least for the next four years, eight strategic priorities that are provided in detail within the plan. And those are aligned CTE programs, aligned meaning both secondary and post-secondary, and aligned to workforce demands, systemic career development, student achievement, making the formal shift from just collecting data to using data and also using data to identify disparities across sub-populations, work-based learning, as that may be our program quality indicator, sustained professional development, instructor recruitment and retention, and the last one, I probably shouldn't have hidden, is middle school CTE. So you'll see a lengthy description of each of those when we talk about our vision and what we're trying to accomplish over the next four years. The third section relates to fiscal responsibility and you'll see in this section a description of how we will approve recipients for funds. This is based on a requirement that was in the law before, but they never required us to define it, and it's called size, scope, and quality. And essentially what the law says is there has to be some criteria to assure that the programs locals are delivering are of sufficient size, scope, and quality to meet the needs of every learner. They said this in the last law, but this time they're actually making us describe and define what is sufficient size, what is sufficient scope and quality of programs to be effective. So you'll see within the plan our minimums, you know, our baselines of what we consider, which would be used for approval of funds. And to tie that in, again, with the whole plan, is we base those around those four guiding principles. So what is sufficient size if we're talking equity? You know, what is sufficient scope if we're talking coordinated? So that's how you'll see those size, scope, and quality definitions organized. We talked about the split of funds, that's the section that discusses that. Also talks about how we will distribute funds amongst consortia and also using our statewide reserve funds, which again, went from 10% to 15%. And this is our opportunity to be really innovative and bold and kind of change priorities if priorities change and use these funds to give back to locals. So these funds still have to go to support local programs, but the NDE will have more oversight and figuring out, well, what is that program we want to support with these funds? And that can be responsive to different changes up here as well.
Schools have to apply for this?
For the reserve funds or for Perkins?
I mean, for being a part of this program.
They do.
And so I've forgotten how many schools you will take.
For Perkins? So we'll take all of them. Our goal is all of them. Right now, we only have two districts who do not participate in Perkins funding. And since I've been here, the most I've ever seen not participate is three out of 244, 245. So the majority, all high schools in the state right now are offering CTE. So the folks that haven't applied, it's usually relative to funding or other reasons, which we're trying to make sure they're a part of.
And where does that $15,000, is that the upfront money they have to have to, what is that?
Yeah, so in the law, it talks about what would be the minimum allocation through a formula a district or recipient would need to stand alone and still meet that criteria of sufficient size, scope, and quality. So the law stipulates a $15,000 threshold for secondaries and $50,000 for post-secondaries. So what that means is we get this big pot of money through a formula. We use census data for population and poverty data for school-aged residents and that's specified in the law as well. And if we do all the calculations, if a district does not receive at least $15,000, we require, the law requires that they consort, that they join with other recipients to then meet that $15,000 threshold and then operate as a consortia of districts instead of just a standalone. But there is no upfront cost, like the districts don't have to put in any funds to participate. They just have to go through the revision process and they have to submit an application and they have to sign a set of assurances that they meet all of those, we're calling them essential components, of size, scope, and quality.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Work-based learning, are students able to earn some high school credits for on-the-job even if it isn't a certified teacher that's in the space?
Yeah.
Will you explain that?
Absolutely. So workplace experiences, work-based learning specifically, our intention is that they are expanded learning opportunities, that it has a strong tie, that it is intentionally infused with what's happening in their program and in their class. There is a supplemental endorsement for work-based learning coordination, so someone in the school to help coordinate that program, but it's not one that every single CTE instructor would have to have for their students to participate in that program. Another area where we're really going to have to, talking about that statewide system, consider all these little nuances to make sure it's high-quality work-based learning programs and experiences as well. Yeah, great point. Okay, we're getting close. The last section is all about accountability and this is where you'll see more information about that program quality indicator, work-based learning, our definitions for all the different state performance levels and our targets, and then also a description of how we as a state and locals are going to address any disparities or gaps in performance that are identified through this process. Okay, that's the bulk of it. So next steps. Right now, as I mentioned, begins our public comment period on both our whole plan as well as specifically the state-determined levels of performance. We will also be in January, starting our public hearings, which will be either face-to-face or Zoom or something that's live, where we're able to describe the contents of the plan and have a discussion and take any comments. I know the commissioner as well as others have had some communication already with the governor's office. The governor is afforded 30 days to review and sign the plan as well. It's required that he has the opportunity to sign, but his signature is not required for submission to OCTAY. I'd love his signature. I think that's a nice signal since so much of this aligns with other workforce priorities in the state. We had his education policy advisor, is that her title? I think at one of our high-level stakeholder meetings, I know you and Ryan, I think, met with the governor last week or maybe today, Monday, last week? And then that will be ongoing as well. We'll then continue to respond to public comment as that's required per law. Everyone who submits any sort of comment, we will respond to or provide a response to and then incorporate that feedback and of course, work with the committee as well as the full board on considering all of that input that we received. So probably most importantly is this updated timeline between now and April when it's due. So that first row is really about your role, the state board, and our plan, which certainly can be revised in terms of our collaboration. So this month, you're getting it and you get to review it. Next month, as Rachel said, I will be here and ready and open to take any comments, questions, feedback, more the merrier. I'll also at that time provide you a full draft of our new revision process as well as the new local application, which aligns with that process. And then in February, we will have an updated draft as well as a change summary, so you're able to see how the feedback has been incorporated, any changes we've made since then. And then our goal would be to request approval of the new state plan by March, so we could submit it by the April 15 deadline. I like to submit things early, so that's why we're seeking approval in March. But as you can see below that, a lot of things will be happening kind of behind the scenes. As I mentioned, we'll have state plan and performance level comments accepted now through February 9th. We will also provide, hopefully by January, an executive summary as well as the full draft to the governor for his 30 days or in preparation of his 30 days. We'll also be doing public hearings. We'll be launching our revision process this month and that should set us up in enough time to make sure we have the draft we want to send and the plan we want to propose to the feds. And that's the plan.
Wow. Thank you, Katie, so much. And Katie has provided with you, light reading. Happy holidays.
It's pretty dense.
The Strategic Planning Performance Improvement Committee did meet last Tuesday and had spent quite a bit of time going through a draft prior to this and Katie did a great job in making some changes based on our discussion and summarizing that for us, which will happen again. One of the pieces that I know she and her team has, have really gone through again and taken a close look at, making sure there aren't items in here that go really beyond the federal requirements. So that's a piece as you look through it. If you have a question about something, Katie's the expert to talk to. Is it something that's in here that is required by the federal statute? Or is it something that's been more about a policy, a state policy decision or direction either by us or by some of the partners, Department of Labor, whomever? So again, your lens on this becomes very important as it sets a trajectory of where we go forward with CTE in Nebraska over the next few years. So are there other questions for Katie?
I just have one comment if I could.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rachel. Katie, it just seems like that Perkins Five, with its choice of new changes and revisions, if you will, has just came to us exactly at the right time where we could utilize it the most.
I think so.
With the expansion, the resources, and the support. So it seems like we are blessed that it came when it did.
I am excited. I think it, there's a lot of things happening right now and it's such an opportunity to make sure they all align and reinforce that alignment. I agree, yeah, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Tomorrow, I probably shouldn't say this because I'm nervous about it, but tomorrow David is taking me over to the news station to talk a little bit about Perkins Five and solicit more public input. And we were working on the questions and one of them was about like the future of CTE in Nebraska and it just got me so excited because we're already in a really strong place. So to have the opportunity to just enhance and strengthen even more our programs, it's a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Robin, you have a question?
My question, and really it's not just for you, Katie, it's probably for anyone, but I've heard terms like permit, certification, and endorsements. Okay, who sets, who sets the criteria for each? Anybody? I just need to know.
I'll toss that one over to the commissioner.
So yeah, underneath rule and reg from the state board, so actually that's all part of that. It's a rule 20, I'm going to mess it up, 24, 21.
I think both, right?
Both really have an indication of it.
Are permits, anything like waivers then? Is that, and are they, like a waiver usually has like a three-year period, are permits, they're unending?
They're three years, I believe.
Yeah, there's a timeframe, but they can reapply. So it's, you know, it's a chance to be able to use that process to fill those types of voids, basically.
Okay, so three years, three years, three years, three years, infiniti, okay?
So that came through us, Robin. So that was action by the state board. We had a study committee six years ago, I'm thinking, maybe even six years ago, that started looking at some of the issues with teacher shortages and career and tech ed and what were some of the things we could do. And the staff brought together some really great concepts for us to consider, which was a transition of the previous way in which trade certification was allowable, I think, if memory serves me correctly. And this permit is a starting point that I do think has value in us continuing to look at, determining if there's potential expansion, scope, those kinds of things. I don't think we have visited, revisited since it's been in place. That might be something that would be good to come forward. How much is it being used? Are there, is there any feedback in the process? Are there some things that we should look at relative to the permit process? So we passed it, but we haven't really looked at it again for a while.
For a while, okay. I just, I guess, like the concept as you talk about teacher shortage, obviously in this area in particular, but we're seeing it more and more throughout. So I'll be very interested in our discussion about permits. Thank you.
Right, I think it's one that would be advantageous to bring forward as we've had the library media piece come forward a little bit. You know, now might be the time for us to take a look at, is there value in this permit concept in some other ways? And that would go over to teaching.
Maybe after April.
Anything else, Rachel?
Anything else? I just wanted to think the team and the other people in the agency, we've had so many folks helping us with this, but specifically the CTE team and all of the specialists. It's been a labor of love and everybody has contributed. We've had work groups, we've had planning sessions, and everybody's just been so energized and focused and it's been really exciting to see. So just a big thank you.
And thank you, Katie, and thank you for bringing the committee along as much as you have. You've really kept us informed and kept us engaged throughout the process also, so thank you.
See you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Rachel, with your permission, if we could break in and take a five-minute break.